We are still waiting for them to be finished. You are in the right spot. It is six o'clock, six oh two actually, but we're just waiting. So my apologies, but thank you.
Welcome everyone to the study session on November tenth, twenty twenty five. And interim city manager, I will turn it over to you to help us with the next agenda item, homeless prevention and mitigation.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. This evening, Councilwoman McCandless is here to talk to us about just the overall landscape of the issue of homelessness. It's something that's been top of mind as a concern in our community for quite some time and continues to increase more so, it seems, every day. And she's been working with a group for the last three years on this topic and just is here to share what's been going on.
Very good. Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being allowed to speak in front of my colleagues and in front of our city to talk about what is easily one of the most complicated issues that municipalities are dealing with. I'm going to invite you to interrupt me at any point to raise questions or ask for clarification. I also have a number of people in the room who have special expertise, so I may prevail upon them should you have a question I can't answer. So I wanted to just let you know what we're going to talk about this evening. First, we're just going to outline the scope of the issue. We're going to talk about what the city does already, what ordinances we have on the books, what kind of staff are dedicated to this, talk a little bit about mitigation strategies for people who are the obvious homeless, and then we're going to talk about prevention strategies. To no one's surprise, homelessness is increasing across the country. It is currently the highest rate that we have seen since we've been keeping track. It's happening in rural communities, urban communities, and suburban communities. In some ways, the suburban communities are the least capable of dealing with it because they have higher numbers and they have fewer resources to dedicate. So for example, downtown Kansas City, you have Kansas City Rescue Mission, you have City Union Mission, you have additional resources there that in Eastern Jack, we have no shelters in all of Eastern Jack, even though we have six hundred thousand people who live out here. With the being, with the increases, you're seeing it for a lot of reasons. You're seeing increased mental health and substance use disorder, also not a surprise to anyone, we're seeing that in every community. Inflation has had a big piece of this, and when I talk about inflation, especially rent inflation, Kansas City has the highest rate of increase in the nation, in part because we were an underpriced market. We passed the median and we have now become an overpriced market. Because of that, lots of units are being pulled out to move into a higher expense market. While we have increased our minimum wage here, we still have a lot of low wage jobs and people who are putting together employment to be able to pay for housing. So they may have multiple jobs, they may have part-time, they may be on the gig economy. We're just seeing a lot of patchwork employment that is leading to challenges in housing. And then Kansas City, we think we are sixty thousand units short in affordable housing. That's in part because we aren't building, in part because of rent escalations, and I'm going to talk about dropout of units from Lytec Housing. So what that means is, in the past, we have had federal dollars that have passed through the state to be able to offset the cost of building affordable housing. You have to stay in that program for thirty years, but at the thirty-year mark, you can then become market-rate housing. So a number of those units, we think twenty percent of those units will drop out the next five years. So from surveys that have been done by people who spend a great deal of time in the social sciences, one in four people worry about entering homelessness. Now, that could be near homelessness, that could be moving in with your parents, that could be, you know, living in your friend's basement, but not having the housing situation that is best for you and your family. The one that kind of blew my hair back was twenty-two percent of renters spend all of their money on rent. You can imagine that's not sustainable for long. Those folks are using food pantries, food stamps, et cetera, to be able to make ends meet otherwise, but those people are at high risk. Many of the folks in this room will talk to the barriers that exist for being able to move from homelessness, and I'm talking about street-living homelessness, into a better situation. Anybody who's lived on the streets, they often are robbed, there's assaults, many of them lose their identification more than once. And so unless you have in your purse your birth certificate, your social security card somewhere nice and safe, the work that it takes to replace that identification is both expensive and time-consuming and just frankly confusing. The number of times that my kid had to go to the DMV to actually get his driver's license because he couldn't remember to bring the right kind of paperwork, it just lets you know that this can be an overwhelming activity. The other is that outstanding warrants used to be a difficult thing to find because you'd have to go in the back there and go through the boxes of the old warrants. As these have all moved on to CaseNet, people can look at really old warrants. Well, old warrants mean that you can't get a driver's license, so that gets in the way of people getting replacement ID. Same thing with CaseNet. Past evictions are now lifelong, instead of you used to be able to go back and look at those for three years, now you can go back and look at them forever. Some of those have been satisfied, meaning that the landlord received their payment, the eviction was vacated, but it was never taken out of the system, so that makes it hard. If you are going into HUD housing, you cannot go in with an outstanding warrant. If you have a past eviction from HUD housing and you have not satisfied the debt, you cannot come back into HUD housing. If you have been in HUD housing and were evicted for cause, in our housing here, the rules are you are banned for three years. So you can imagine that these things all stack up. And then mental health and substance use disorders are barriers for being able to complete complex tasks, do your paperwork, and just living in a communal setting can be hard when you have your own mental health and substance use issues. I want to give a shout out to my colleagues here who have been working on the Unsheltered Work Group for the last three years. If you're a member of this group, would you just stand up so we can give you our appreciation? I'm really indebted to them for meeting monthly to really share resources and do collective problem solving. You can see from the slide here, the breadth of resources, so everything from the public library to the housing authority, to comprehensive mental health, to people who are doing reentry work, it's a little bit of everything. I'm going to pass this over to my colleague Amber Bauer, who is the senior director of the Continuum of Care with the Greater Kansas City Coalition to End Homelessness. I've asked her to talk briefly about a thing called point-in-time count. It is the way that we count people who are living unsheltered. So Amber?
Thanks, you knew I was going to ask. Thank you, Bridgette, for asking me to come today. Hello, mayor and fellow council members. Thank you for letting us come and speak. So, she didn't introduce me. So the point-in-time count is a HUD-mandated twenty-four-hour count, one day a year in January. It has to be within the last ten days of January. Why, we might ask, because it's cold. HUD does not give us wiggle room, that is when it has to be counted, and so that's what we do. It takes a coordinated effort of the community. Its accuracy depends on effort, and why does it matter to have an accurate count? You will see, if you've looked at our point-in-time reports over the past few years, the numbers are rising. A lot of that is due to the increase of homelessness, but also in the methodology that we are using to complete the count, which has gotten a great deal more sophisticated in the past few years. So who are hard to count? I will speak specifically for Eastern Jack. This is my home, I've lived here for my whole life, used to work at CSL. So Eastern Jack is near and dear to my heart, and I will say the point-in-time count in Eastern Jack is harder to do than it is in the city. That is because we have the folks sleeping in hotels, we have the folks sleeping in cars, we have a lot of our folks that are chronically homeless on the streets who end up being doubled up for a few days in the winter when it gets cold. But all of those are creating barriers for us not getting an accurate count in this geographic region. People that are in hospital or jails, doubled-up families, I'm sure many of you have heard of McKinney-Vento, which is what the school districts look at when it comes to homelessness youth in their systems, those youth are not counted within HUD's point-in-time count because all of those families are doubled up, and so that does not meet HUD's definition. So when we're looking at these numbers, we also know that the great deal of our kiddos within our school district here are doubled up, you have to keep in mind that those are not even being accounted for when we're talking about this issue. So independence numbers, so last year in the count, we had a hundred and fifty unsheltered individuals that were counted here. I will tell you, five years ago, when we did the count in Independence, it would be lucky to count fifteen. And I'm not, Perkins has been a part of these counts, I'm not just saying that to be like exaggeratory, but the numbers are significantly growing. Forty-one of those hundred and fifty were chronically homeless, which in HUD's eyes is greater than one year of homelessness. So these are people that have been in a place without human habitation for more than a year. Fifty-three of the one fifty were newly homeless, meaning that those fifty-three people have never been counted before in the pit and that are newly homeless in your community and that they're your neighbors. Thirty-three percent of them have a disability. That could be behavioral health, that could be substance use, that could be medical, that could be a plethora of disabilities. Twenty percent of them were over the age of fifty, which is a staggering number, and then seventy-two percent of them counted were white.
I will say that we worked extremely hard on the point-in-time count. You can do a count, if you don't want to count people, you can manage to have almost no resources and have a count of ten people. We worked really, really hard to be able to come up with a hundred and fifty, in part because it was important to us to know the scope of the problem. And while a hundred and fifty is a lot of people, if you look at Las Vegas, you look at Phoenix, you look at Washington, you look at LA, these are places with thousands who are living unsheltered on the streets. Hundred and fifty is actually a manageable number, I think it is one that we could make a great dent in. I put this slide up here because I think it's important to know that the people who come to our attention are the ones that you see. They're the people on the street corner, they're the guy you bump into at QuickTrip, the person that you would rather not encounter. The number of people who are skating that razor's edge between housed and unhoused and cross over that frequently is that group of unseen. Our estimate is that there are two thousand of those people at risk of being homeless. Those people are couch surfing, they're in hotels, they're in cars, half of these are children. It is important to know that families are at profound risk, we'll talk about that in a minute. I'm going to just hit a couple of strains on the system that I think are important to know. With current changes at the federal government, we anticipate that there will be two hundred thousand people who will come off of the Medicaid rolls in the next year. So those, some of the biggest gains that we have seen in Medicaid are adults who have chronic mental illness, usually young adult men who previously weren't covered by Medicaid but now are. This is the group that's the highest risk to come off of Medicaid and no longer be receiving treatment. We know that SNAP has been in the news a lot, that's Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, so that's the old food stamps. There will be additional requirements put on, we think a hundred and fifty thousand people will be coming off of the SNAP rules once the federal government starts paying those bills again. If you have to pay rent or you have to eat food, you're going to sacrifice rent for food, so people will become further behind. We are seeing a lot of housing being bought up as investments, some by local landlords, but mostly by out-of-town venture capital. Those rents have gone up significantly. And then, as I said, twenty to thirty percent of affordable units are going to come off the rolls here in the next five years. I put this up here because everything we're going to talk about from now on is the idea that it takes everybody doing a little piece to do this difficult work. Stone soup is the kid's story, everybody brought a turnip or an onion or a piece of meat, nobody could make the soup by themselves, everybody had to get together, and that's really the story of mitigation and prevention of homelessness. I'm going to, actually, I'm going to skip ahead and let my colleague, whoops, speak first because he has to get to Cub Scouts, so I'm going to let Doug come up and talk about Community Services League.
There is a question.
Yes.
Sorry. Of that one fifty, when you're out and about in the neighborhood, it sure seems like there's a lot more than a hundred and fifty people that are just floating around Independence. So would it be your best guess, statement that that number is super low for us?
I, when you look at other communities who have similar populations and they're counting thirty to fifty, I think one fifty is much more realistic. I think it's probably closer to two hundred and fifty for the people who weren't able to be counted. We know that we counted a hundred and fifty actual people.
Right.
I think probably two fifty is more accurate number.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. McCandless. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Doug Cowan, president and CEO of Community Services League, soon to be Cub Scout leader in twelve minutes. I'm going to breeze through a couple of things that many of you are familiar with, just things that Community Services League is working on in partnership with the city and others. I did want to give a quick acknowledgement, there are several folks in this room who are part of churches, organizations, and others that are in this field and in this shared work, and I just want to acknowledge your presence and thank you for your interest and support around this difficult topic. So we're going to talk about Independence Together, the Eastern Jackson County Drop-In Center, Cold Weather Shelter, different housing, and then savings plan and wealth building. So you're familiar with Independence Together, we launched that in March of two thousand twenty-three. The city contracts with CSL annually for a hundred thousand dollars to leverage the city and the taxpayers' dollars. We go out and get another hundred thousand. We do that by working with our community improvement districts here in Independence, along with, we've had a recurring, quite large grant from T-Mobile's headquarters as homelessness in Kansas City is an issue close to them. So what is Independence Together? We say that it is a supported employment program for adults experiencing homelessness, and what the heck does that mean? It means that there's this proverbial statement, get a job, right? You see a guy on the street, a bum, right? People call him a bum, get a job. To be clear, I think that's a very derogatory statement, but it's hard to get a job if you live on the street. You're dirty, you smell, you slept in grass, or maybe if you're lucky, in a tent. You probably didn't sleep very much, you are at risk of violence or somebody burning your tent down. It's a tough existence, it's very hard for people to go get a job. And so we needed to create a very low barrier opportunity. We modeled this after other successful programs in the country, including Hope Faith Ministries in East Kansas City, and we went and toured them, and there was a lot of work that went into the building of this. But we have been able to hire forty-six folks to work in this program. They don't need IDs, they don't need to have criminal background checks, we provide them all the clothing, food that they need, we provide them the training, we provide them the transportation to get to work, we provide everything they need so they can get to work. And we've been able to place all of those folks into housing, some have moved on to different things in life, some have graduated into other employment. We leveraged your commitment to this program by going out and seeking and obtaining a five-year contract with MoDOT to expand this. So what do these folks do? They pick up litter on our roadways here in Independence, and MoDOT liked it so much that they wanted us to do it on MoDOT roadways in Jackson County. So today, we have a total of twenty people that work between the two programs, they are all stably housed, and it's just been a fantastic success. We're actually more than a million and a half pounds collected, so valuable service, people feel that their work is meaningful and impactful and appreciated. I cannot tell you, hand to God, how many people on our crews come up and say, they get waves and honks every day, every single day of the year, and it really is uplifting to them. They have a sense of purpose, it is a great program. I, for the good of our community, I hope you will continue to prioritize that in the budget. This is a boutique program, but it's making significant gains. I will tell you, in the interest of full disclosure, probably the biggest challenge we have is getting people to move on. They like working for us, they like working in their community, we would really like people to move on to other opportunities. The biggest barrier we have is folks can't get cars. They just rent as high, as Dr. McCandless said, they can't afford a car, their transportation options are limited on how to get to work, so we're digging and really doubling down our efforts to try to get folks vehicles, so that's kind of where we're continuing to take the program. Oh, I think I'm just going to walk through this. Drop-In Center, very quickly, also with the support of the city, it's technically in Kansas City, Missouri, at forty-three forty-one Blue Ridge Boulevard, at the basement of Good Shepherd Community of Christ. This is a Monday-through-Thursday drop-in center specifically designed to meet the needs of unsheltered individuals, come as you are, we feed two meals a day, we help with some of the barriers that Dr. McCandless said, first, starting with identification, opportunities for short-term, then long-term shelter. We see everything, the numbers are soaring, we're fifty to sixty folks a day, they live between Independence, Raytown, Kansas City, there's a bus station close by, so they come from anywhere, but it's designed to be very intentional and meet them where they are and to create a space and a place that is welcoming. We have a lot of supplies and equipment that help people survive the outdoors. About five years ago, we started with the city in partnering on Cold Weather Shelter. We help Independence residents who might otherwise be sleeping outside on the coldest nights of the year to access hotels and motels. We will again be executing on that plan for this upcoming winter. The city has been an incredible, incredible contributor, last year contributed forty-one thousand dollars. To put that into context, we spent more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on motel nights, putting up folks for a total of more than five thousand nights last year. Typically, on an average year, we activate that program for about twenty-one nights. I wish we could run it all winter, but you're talking about a multimillion-dollar program to shelter everybody, so we activate it on the coldest, most life-threatening nights of the year, and we continue to work in coordination with Kansas City's year-round shelter. We, for housing, we maintain a hundred and fifty-five units of permanent supportive housing, we house two hundred and fifty-five of the most chronically homeless people in Kansas City. This is in partnership with our local Continuum of Care. There are some potentially devastating cuts coming at the federal level and transitions of the scope of the work that may put a lot of strain on local communities. I don't want to overinflate or underinflate that issue, but those will come to a head in two thousand twenty-six. However, a group of influential senators is really pushing HUD to go in a different direction because they see the potential harm in local communities, we'll continue to keep you updated on that. And then with folks, we're continuing to work not only on the short term for housing, but helping them through incremental savings opportunities, develop some financial stability and capacity. So the one thing that's not on this slide is we do maintain a team of four dedicated street outreach workers that are here in Independence and throughout Jackson County every day, connecting with folks. We believe the pathway out of homelessness almost exclusively has to come in the form of relationship, people need somebody that they can trust. There, of course, has to be opportunities for shelter and resources and things like that, but a relationship is critical, so you will see our folks out. We are forever grateful to the police department, who is a great partner in helping us with that, our local mental health professionals, and certainly the folks at the city's arch program. So it takes a village. Happy to entertain any questions, and I'm sorry for the rapid-fire nature of my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to just back up to the part to talk about, tell me about the role of the city. I just want clarity around ordinances, you know, what's already on the books. People cannot solicit money on the corner in the city of Independence, so they would have to apply for a permit, and they would have to go through a process in order to be able to do that. Now, you may say, well, I see people all the time. Mostly, you're seeing them on that Kansas City-Independence border, Forty Highway and Sterling, you're seeing them perhaps at Forty and Lee Summit Road. They shouldn't be inside the city. If you call the police, they can come and ask them to move on. It would come in as a low-level call, so don't expect that the police are going to be rushing over there when they have perhaps other things to do, but just so you know that that is against the rules. You cannot camp on public property, so the Parks Department is allowed to move you on, the police are allowed to move you on. You cannot trespass on private property, so the business owner or the homeowner can ask someone to move off their property. If you need the help of police, then that is something that you can make a phone call as well. We have arrangements with local businesses that the police can, even without a complaint from the business, as long as they have the MOU on record, they can go in and tell people that they need to move along. It's been very effective on Nolan Road to be able to tell people to shelter elsewhere. I want to be clear, if you break the law, you can be arrested. So if you cause a disturbing the peace, if you are threatening someone, if you are breaking into cars, any of those things, you should be arrested, and we will arrest you. So I don't want anybody to think that the conversation we're having around homelessness, that people who are committing crimes aren't still going to be involved with the police because they are. The city does remove illegal encampments. We spend about thirty-
Councilmember?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Back up one, if you would. So I'm just, I'm missing something here. So we have prohibition against camping on public properties, we have a prohibition against camping on, or trespassing on private properties. Those are the only two options, I think. Where are they staying then, if they're?
So very often, they're on places where the private property doesn't enforce. When I'm talking about public properties, so inside of parks, et cetera, our teams go in and clean out encampments in our parks all the time. There are places that no one is enforcing, so nobody's paying attention to the backwoods part of a piece of land, but you have the right to have people cleared out if you need to. So encampments, like I said, we spend around thirty-five thousand dollars a year out of the Parks Department budget to remove illegal encampments and do the cleanup that's necessary there. Mostly, these are bigger ones. So where you have a large gathering, or where it's very publicly visible, or it's in our park system where they feel like people are feeling unsafe. Part of the other things that the city does is we demolish dangerous buildings, because those tend to be places folks break into for shelter. Some of our fires have been set from people trying to stay warm in the winter. So removal of dangerous buildings is an important part. I'm going to talk about the arch program and community policing in a minute. Some of the other interventions that I think we don't pay attention to, you know, I talked about the importance of paying attention to those people who are on that transient edge of homelessness. The other is to think about how people got there in the first place. Nobody gets to homelessness without like a bunch of stuff happening to them on the front end. A lot of that happens in childhood, in teenage years, that drug abuse, mental illness, those cumulative effects over time culminate with somebody who is not able to stay housed. So youth court is a really key intervention that the city has. We intervene early on interpersonal disputes among kids, can help with substance abuse referrals, mental health issue. You can see that our youth court intervenes from ages seven to eighteen. Judge Watkins does an exceptional job of finding resources for that. It's been a very successful program. We have a truancy diversion court for the parents. So if a kid misses enough school, they get sent to truancy diversion court. Really, that's the place to get connected with resources so that your kid can get the care that they need so they can be in school. Those early interventions to be able to get them all the way to graduation so they can have long-term employment. We have an adult drug court. If you come in through court and you are receiving services, the judge has the option to suspend any of the punishment while you are completing your therapy. So you're getting treatment for substance use disorder or for mental health issues, and eventually, should you not complete that, then they can enforce the sentence. But the data is absolutely clear. Sending people to drug court where they can get treatment and they have scheduled check-ins with the judge, those people do best in the long run. At my free clinic that I used to run up in Susquehanna, I had more than a dozen graduates of drug courts, some of them now twenty years clean, so a program that pays big dividends. The other is that the judges have the option to address outstanding warrants if they are working with an agency, either getting therapy or working a program to get housed. The judge has the option that when they complete their program, they can remove some of those outstanding warrants. And as we said, those warrants get in the way of people being housed, getting identification, and generally moving on. So this has been a very, very good program. Just as a reminder, we have to work with outside agencies. The city absolutely does not have the capacity to provide housing, to be caseworkers, to do direct interventions. It is only through the good grace of the people who do this job every day that they are in partnership with the city to do those things. We are currently working with Kansas City on some of these issues, because cross-jurisdiction is a big deal. Being able to just shove people back and forth is the least effective mechanism for dealing with homelessness. I appreciate very much the attitude of Kansas City and being a cooperating partner. And then housing efforts. So both working with the Independence Housing Authority, also thinking about where do families with kids, where can they afford to live? And for a community, you have to think about housing across the entire spectrum of cost. I know everybody gets upset when we talk about having multifamily housing, but these are the folks who we know are at risk of becoming unhoused, and they will be our future generation of people who are living on street corners, so it's important that we think about them. I'm going to give a special shout-out to Comprehensive Mental Health. They are a behavioral health service agency for this area. They do everything from kids to adolescents to adults. They have a walk-in behavioral health center for people over the age of eighteen, which means that you don't have to go to the ER for your mental health issue. You can come to the triage center. You will be seen by a mental health professional. They will then get you into therapy. If you go to the ER, they may treat you briefly, but there's not a lot of follow-up. So really, the Behavioral Crisis Center is the best place for you to go. Our arch team takes people who are in the midst of crisis there, so the same thing, they can bypass the ER, which is the very most expensive place and the least adequate place to receive behavioral health care. They also have school-based and home-based youth supports and are working in our school districts to be able to deliver those. I know I keep talking about kids, and that's not who you see on the corner, but it's really the group that we need to be attending to so they don't. They also have a specialty team that does camp outreach to invite to treatment and therapy, and they connect with them. So that, back to that relationship building, it takes a long time to reestablish that trust before people are willing to come in. The arch program is a paramedic program that is run through our fire department. It is currently paid through opioid settlement funds. This is a paramedic and social work team. Fire, police, and dispatch can bring them to a scene. That way, our other resources can back into service where they belong, and the arch team can spend more time with people. Often, they know them. They've reached the point where the police can call them in advance and be like, we know we are going here. This might be somebody that you can come and assist with. Not only do they have more time, but they're a conduit to community resources. They can provide transportation to the triage center, to the ER, and they can have regular follow-up with high-need clients. We have community engagement officers. They also are making connections. They refer to existing resources. I posted this on my Facebook page, inviting people who are interested in this topic to come. And one of the comments I got was from someone who had been helped by one of our community engagement officers, who said, you know, they took the time to listen to me. They connected me to mental health services, and I actually got myself back on track, and I'm no longer living in homelessness. They also have training to be alert for mental health needs and for arrest if necessary, but that's the last tool in the toolbox, hoping that you can get people into appropriate services. I can't call out school resource officers enough. They are really the underappreciated arm of our police department. They spend a lot of time with high-risk kids. They also know when these kids are at risk of homelessness. They have an excellent rapport and are able to get them hooked into resources that the kids may not be willing to talk to other people about. So just a special shout-out to them. Our greatest homeless advocates are actually our four school districts. Among those, we have one thousand children who are in the McKinney-Vento Program. That is the program that the federal government designates for children living in hotels, living in cars, doubled up in an apartment, basically with no permanent address for themselves. There are a whole set of social workers who work with the colleagues in the room here to find housing, but don't underestimate the enormous amount of work that the school districts have to do in order to address this complicated issue.
Mr. Mayor, please go ahead.
Councilwoman, back to your last slide there with the school district. So one thousand students between the four. I expect that some of them are probably on their own some, but most are not. So that mean that number is probably double, if not triple?
Yes. So that counts the kids. That does not count the household, and it does not count the family. So, you know, we had to put school bus stops outside of pay-by-the-week motels, because we had enough families who called at home that we have to pick kids up there and take them to school. So it's easy to talk about that group that you see on the corner who are decidedly inconvenient when you want to go into QuickTrip, but I really think that you would be remiss not to talk about that group who is at risk. These are the people who are at the highest risk. They float in and out of homelessness and have the highest rate of tipping over, especially when social services and social supports disappear. Mothers with children under the age of five is the fastest-growing group. Elderly and disabled are the second-highest rate of increase. Domestic violence survivors are often evicted, even though they are the victim, and the landlord doesn't want to mess with it, or there's damage done to the apartment. And obviously, they may be leaving for safety issues, so that's another group. Foster youth, you know, that's just a group of kids who just struggles all the way around. They have to be able to establish a rental history in order to rent. Well, you can't get a rental history until you've rented. It's kind of the catch-22. Substance use disorder, obviously, that offers all kinds of challenges, both socially keeping jobs and being able to manage money. And then people with past legal issues also floating in and out of homelessness. Just for example, when you leave prison, you leave with a pair of shoes, some clothes, and a hearty handshake, and people hope that things turn out well for you. You can imagine also, without an ID, without a work history, and without a rental history, the odds of you getting housing are slim. So I am just going to touch on those groups. I won't exhaustively discuss everyone who does this work, but I want to give you an example of the people who are doing this work. You know, Mother's Refuge is a safe home for pregnant women up to the age of twenty-one. They take girls as young as fifteen. They can stay in the home for two years. They get them through their pregnancy. They help them learn to become moms, and they learn them how to become adults. So there are lots of life skill classes and parenting classes. They help them with money management, and they build a savings program for them so that when they graduate on, they have money to be able to do that first and last month's rent deposit. They found that that was so difficult, and that they could not find apartments for these women, that they are opening their own thirteen-bed apartment complex. You can stay in that for up to three years. It provides wraparound services and colleagues who are all raising kids together. They want to get them through age five, so that by the time the child goes to kindergarten, then they're able to get more full-time employment.
Mr. Mayor? Councilwoman, so Mother's Refuge, they're opening up the new facility there off of Maple. So when you drive by that place, that is what is going to go in there?
Yep. And, you know, I mean, it takes both fundraising. It takes supportive zoning and client counsel to be able to make those things possible. Actually, they got some federal funds to get that started, too. So just back to, it takes a village to make these things work. Have to give a shout-out to Hope House. They really reexamined their model during COVID. And during COVID, fewer women were coming into shelter. And Hope House said, okay, is there a different way we can do this? And they changed their model such that they safety-proofed the home where the woman was living. So they got a protection from abuse order that couldn't be anywhere on the property or within, I don't remember what the rules are, a hundred and fifty feet of residence. But they went and put in cameras. They redid locks. They put in window markers so that if it would go off, if it was interfered with. And they were able to keep women in their homes and the kids in the district. So from a family stability standpoint, they found that this model has worked much, much better for them. Now, there are times when the place is in the man's name, and they have to evacuate them. But what they're finding is they want to rehouse them as quickly as possible, so they spend the least amount of time in shelter. Drum Center for Children has been around forever. It's one of the jewels of Independence off of Lee Summit Road. They do all kinds of supports for foster families. We talked about foster children being some of the highest for at-risk for future homelessness. At any one time, they have forty to sixty elementary kids there who are living in family units. But as anybody who works in foster care knows, the transition to adulthood is really the hard part, because you still need those supports. My twenty-four-year-old daughter calls me all the time. She's like, hey, did you know that you have to pay property tax on a car? And I'm like, yes, I do know that. So my son is still trying to figure out why he needs renters insurance, but they're lucky because they have that person they can turn to for those questions. And so what Drum Farm did was extend that time of support, so they have that time to transition successfully into adulthood. And the young people who come out of that program do much, much better. They also do street outreach for kids who are living in camps, living under bridges, living in cars, or being reported by the school district as being, you know, emancipated minors because they're living on their own. They will provide services anywhere that suits that kid. They'll meet them at the library. They'll meet them at school. They'll meet them at church. And they do just a fantastic job at connecting them back through. And I talked about their transitional living program. Ninety-two percent of the youth leave with a job, a place to live, and a vehicle. So they have done everything they can to set them up for success. You're probably familiar with Hillcrest Transitional Housing. They do a ninety-day program. Their rules are you have to have a full-time job to come in. They give you rent-free for three months, so you can get back on your feet, so you can save up to be able to move on and move out. They help you with budgeting and other issues. They help you pay off old debt so that you can afford your utilities, help you catch up on those things. They also built a youth transitional program. You're picking up a theme here. People are figuring out that interventions on the early side are better. So they have an eleven-apartment unit. Kids can be between the ages of sixteen and twenty to be in that program. They can stay for two years, but they have to be working on an educational goal in order to be in that, because the whole point is to be able to keep them gainfully employed. I didn't put a slide in for Salvation Army. They take only families with children. They also do wraparound supports. They have recently remodeled their settings so that they have individual units, because families have to learn how to live together in those kinds of units. It was much safer and better for families than to be in the congregate setting. Shout-out to Heartland Center for Behavioral Change. They are a full-service mental health and substance use disorder treatment center. They have both inpatient and outpatient. They are the recipients of people who are sentenced during Jackson County's drug court, sometimes mental health court as well, and they provide those services. They also have a specialty team that is doing camp outreach to be able to provide services. The nice thing is they partner with our arch team and do ride-alongs with them, so that we are doing our best to approach people where they are. Truman Habitat for Humanity. You're going to say, hey, these people build houses. What do they have to do with homelessness? As I said, disabled and seniors are one of the fastest-growing groups. They are being priced out by property tax, but they are also losing homes due to poor maintenance, or because the home no longer can meet their needs for getting in and out of a shower, or having an accessibility ramp to get up the stairs. Truman Habitat gets CDBG funds from the city, which is community development block grants. They are modifying fifteen to twenty homes a year with the goal of keeping those people stably housed for as long as they can, hopefully for the rest of their lives, but perhaps until they had to move into other areas. They also weatherize, and that is a big deal, because there are houses in Independence that are so drafty that people pay more for utilities than they do for rent. So being able to weatherize those makes them more affordable. And then, of course, they are taking abandoned or donated homes, rehabbing those, and getting new people. That stabilizes neighborhoods. It keeps them from being broken into and damaged by people who are looking to stay warm. Legal Aid of Western Missouri gets a big shout-out. We are delighted that they have picked Independence as their newest location. They do all kinds of things to keep people housed. One of the things they do is beneficiary deeds. So it's not unusual for a young adult to live with a parent, and the parent dies. If they don't have a will, the child is evicted because the house has to be sold. We have an example in Councilmember Stewart's area, Second District. Lady who had some mental health challenges, lived with her elderly mother. Mom died. House got sold. She set up camp right outside on the sidewalk, because that was comfortable, and we would move her to somewhere else. And in two weeks, she was back. And after that, she was back. And then after that, she was back, because it was a comfortable, familiar place. Eventually, she was, Amber, thank you, found a permanent location for her that suited her well. But you can see that these take often multiple interventions, much to the frustration of the neighbors. But you also understand from her standpoint, this was home. She couldn't live there anymore, but she could at least look at it. So home preservation through beneficiary deeds. I don't know if that would have saved her home for her, but it might have. So beneficiary deeds, you can download them. You can fill them out and get somebody to sign off on that, get it witnessed. It's a cheap, easy thing to do. Everybody should make sure that your neighbors and cousins have those things done. Everybody should make sure that your neighbors and cousins have those things done. Legal Aid does a lot of eviction prevention. They do a lot of foreclosure prevention. One of the things that's happening is you have an elderly couple, she dies or he dies, well, the amount that you receive from Social Security goes to the person who made the most amount of money. So if you were making it on your Social Security payments, you now have about 2/3 of what you had before your spouse died. And so at that point, you may not be able to afford your home. So one of the things Legal Aid does is they navigate that space with the mortgage companies, see if they can modify payments. Same thing on the eviction prevention. They are often intervening with landlords to see if they can go on a payment plan. And sometimes they're representing their clients because the landlord didn't have heat for two months. And so because of that, there is a negotiation space, and Legal Aid provides an excellent conduit for that. There are currently 2.5 million grandparents raising grandkids in the United States. We have a very high proportion of those here in Independence. So we talked about stability of housing and stability of school as two of the greatest markers for success in children. If the grandparent cannot get guardianship, they cannot enroll the child in school, and they cannot take them for medical care. So guardianship is a key piece to that stability, and Legal Aid does a very nice job of representing those. And then the other, in partnership with places like Truman Habitat, they can take those abandoned buildings, get those back into circulation. I want to call out my friends at Artists Helping the Homeless. They are not currently in Independence. I am going to say that we would love for them to be in Independence. They do some exceptional work on transitional housing. One of my slides talked about how long somebody's in the woods determines how long somebody stays in the woods. If you can get them out of the woods in the first three months, the odds of them being permanently housed go way up. You're out in the woods two years, it's really hard to come back inside, because you have figured it out. You have changed the way you behave, you have solved all the problems, and you're not afraid of being out in the woods anymore. I would be terrified. Like, I would do anything I could to live with my sister, even if I didn't get along with her. I would borrow money, I would max out my credit cards, I would do anything not to be there. But once you've accommodated, you're used to it, it is actually harder to move inside, because there's lots of rules inside. Can't let all your buddies come sleep on the couch. You can't bring the carburetor home that you found outside. You can't let 20 people come in and use the washing machine. So transitioning back inside takes time. We have no transitional housing here. Artists Helping the Homeless would be one group who would allow people to do that period from being outside or from incarceration back into what it means to be housed. They also accept people directly from the hospital. It's one of the real challenges hospitals have, is that they can take care of somebody, they get them treated for their pneumonia, and then what? Where do they go? You can't discharge them to the street. So it gets a lot more complicated for them, being able to discharge people from a bed or from the ER. And Artists Helping the Homeless will come, pick them up, and find a disposition for For their work, you have to be substance-free, you have to drop a urine once a week. You also can't be a registered sex offender, those people aren't allowed to be in their home. But you also have to be part of a treatment program. You have to set goals for education and work, and for recovery if you are a previous substance use disorder. The nice thing about their work is that they provide transportation. So they get people to their jobs, they get them to school, they get them to meetings, they get them to the doctor's appointment. That wraparound service turns out to be probably the thing that is most important for them. Now, there are sober homes in Independence, so you can go there and pay for a cot and live there, but there aren't the wraparound services that you need to be successful. So we are really hoping that our friends at Artists Helping the Homeless will come and establish a transitional program here. Okay, you're very lucky, I'm at the end. These are the takeaways. Housing matters. Stable housing matters. Affordable housing matters. And there's a spectrum of the type of housing that all communities have to have. The others, the wraparound services matter. I can't take someone who's been street-living homeless for two years and put them in an apartment and expect great things are going to happen unless they have wraparound supports. So if you have the opportunity to give a contribution to any of the organizations that I talked about tonight, they are doing magical work. The other is that we have to take care of families and kids, because everything that happens with trauma and stability in those early years results in trauma and instability later in life. I know that we have great schools here, I appreciate everything that they do, and the wraparound services that other organizations provide. Early intervention, the data out of Houston is that the faster they got somebody housed, the cheaper it was, and the more it was going to have stickiness, the more likely they were going to stay. They've gotten to the point where they have reduced their homeless population by 30%, and it has stayed. And they are so good at it that they are now intervening within two weeks of somebody making it to the street. It takes a lot of work. It takes a regional effort, and it takes persistence and patience to make any of these programs work. Back to stone soup. Everybody has something that they can contribute to this. We have so many agencies who do great work, but it takes the work of the community as well. Thank you for listening. I'm open for any other questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the presentation. You had mentioned specifically working with Kansas City. Are there other jurisdictions like Raytown, Blue Springs, Lee Summit, or they may work with as well?
So four years ago, we had an ordinance that was put together by Mid-America Regional Council, allowing municipalities to have a very loose arrangement of partnership and at least shared ideas. Independence passed it within a week. There you go. The other municipalities didn't. We are resurrecting that conversation, because nothing that happens in one place doesn't happen in another place, and borders really mean nothing. Even though people do tend to stay local, there is some porous activity along, especially along major transit corridors.
Okay, thank you. One other question. You mentioned 150 people. How did, how was that number came up with? I mean, can you kind of give me an idea? How you got that number?
Sure. We talked to 150 people. And they had to say, we are living, so the questions are things like, hey, we're doing a count, we are trying to get the best information possible, because it helps the federal government know where to put its resources. Would you be willing to take our survey? Where did you sleep last night? How long have you not been sleeping indoors? And then there are a series of other questions that they can choose to answer or not answer, but it takes a huge team to do this, and a lot of patience and kindness. But there are a lot of people who are like, not interested, don't want to talk to you. Some of those people just don't get counted. Some are used to being counted, because they've gone through the process before. We sometimes go to feeding operations, like Stone Church does a lovely dinner on Wednesday night, so we're there to see if anybody is willing to answer the questions. But, you know, Amber and her team are out under bridges and in the woods, and lots of places, encountering people, so each one is counted one at a time.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
On the same topic, there, I've been asked a lot about other municipalities bringing their homeless to Independence. I'm sure a lot of us have heard that, so that's one thing I'd like you to talk about. And then also, is there a migration during the day? Are there homeless from Kansas City coming here during the day for lunch programs and then going back to Kansas City? Like, is that kind of thing, does that happen?
Well, let me start with the first question. Every municipality accuses another municipality of exporting their homeless. That is not happening. I've had conversations with police, I've had conversations with ambulance drivers. This is not a thing. Now, should you be in a hospital and they are going to release you, they may ask you, where's the last place that you lived? Where is it that you want to go? So there may be transit to a different place at the request of the person. That is possible. You want continuity of care, so if I have a medical emergency in Kansas City and I have always gotten my care at Truman, they will likely take me there, because that is the best kind of medical care. So that part does occur. Now, the second question was, oh, are they transiting, okay, during the day? You know, we have such a crummy bus service that I'm not sure that anybody is making big transits to Independence, because we have such better lunch programs here. There are feeding programs in lots of places. If you go, there's a place called Free Hot Lunch, or Free Hot Soup, who does lunch in Winter Park on Sundays. It's the same people who are there. They are all local, they know each other, they come together for community, but they're not shipping, nobody's bringing van loads of people in to join for lunch.
And then we were hoping to get funding for the cold-weather shelter, and weren't able to get everything we needed, so I was hoping you would talk about what that's going to mean for us. And also, we were hoping to get Arch funding, and weren't able to get it. And so can you talk about how that's limiting what we can do with Arch? I think Arch is only Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. We really need it on the weekends. Couldn't you talk about those two things?
Let me start with cold-weather shelter. Cold-weather shelter is something that every single community struggles with. Do you maintain a homeless shelter for 365 days a year, when you have people primarily using them on 30 of the coldest days of the year? If you ask people, they hate going into shelter. They can't take their dog, they can't take their stuff, they can't sleep with their girlfriend, they don't necessarily feel safe in there. And then you take a bunch of people who are stressed out, some with mental illness, and you put them in a really small space, and you wonder what happens. Not good things sometimes. However, when it comes to freezing to death, they're willing to be in places. So we don't have a shelter, so what we have done in the past is pay for hotel rooms. That is a blessing and a curse. The blessing is they have shower facilities, they can be isolated to themselves. The hard part is they don't always, they sometimes invite friends in, and it can cause some troubles for the hotels. It's also very expensive. Doesn't come with any kind of meals, it's just the room. So trying to look at what other options might be, I don't want to speak for Community Services League, but they are exploring other options. So is there a shelter that we can do something indoors? It's interesting that a lot of places have used warehouses, but with tents inside, so it provides a mental separation from other people. You can bring your dog into your tent, and it solves your bedbug problem and many other issues. So that is something that I think communities are looking at, are other ways to approach that. Your last question was about Arch. Right now, we are funding them with opioid settlement funds. Those will last for a while. I appreciate the work that they are doing. They're actually working on a regional collaborative, so that they can do shared notes with other municipalities and share ideas with other municipalities. You're right, you could use them more than just during the day, but they have been such a great adjunct to our police and fire during the day, that they're an appreciated asset.
One more question.
Sure.
So I'm going to, of course, talk about dogs with this, and how important they have become to a lot of unsheltered people. They offer protection, companionship. I get asked a lot what I think about that, when people see dogs walking in all sorts of weather. And so can you talk about how that can be a barrier for them to get help?
It's the number-one barrier for people to come inside is the pet. Either the apartment complex doesn't allow them to bring pets, or they have a really big dog, and they may have a weight limit, 25 pounds and under, but it's also a big barrier for people seeking shelter during cold water, cold weather and hot weather. And while we never thought about that, the days are getting hotter, nights are staying hot, so being able to, you know, leave a bowl outside your business for somebody to be able to water their dog is a nice gift to them. But we don't have great answers to this. It's interesting that domestic violence shelters have figured this out. They had to put in kennels, because they know that women aren't leaving home, because they know their dog will be killed. So they have to bring the dog with them, and so DV shelters are like, yeah, we can solve that problem. We haven't figured that out yet for shelters, but it really is sort of the next frontier for things that we have to solve.
Amber and I have spoken about this. Ideally, we would have some kind of program for people to foster, for short-term fostering, for people who are, you know, getting mental health treatment, or transitional housing, or something like that. And if we had more room in the shelter, I think maybe someday, that's something we can talk about.
And it's not just that, it's that they won't seek medical care, because they can't leave their pet.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, I'm sorry.
One more, one more point. Just maybe think about something, the Councilmember Wiley's point. So she mentioned other jurisdictions bringing homeless to Independence. There was a story in 2021 where that actually did happen. Kansas City, Missouri brought 20 to 30 homeless individuals to Independence and paid for them, but 90, gave them 90-day stents at hotels here in Independence. So it did happen in 2021. However, I'm hoping that it's not still happening.
So their plan was to bring 20 to 30. That was the funding they had. They actually only brought less than 10 and housed them, so they didn't just drop them off in the parking lot and run away.
Well, my point is that they did it.
Yes, and they won't ever do that again, because the heat they got was intense.
Yeah, I'm aware. We put a stop to it fairly quickly, so, thank you.
Councilmember, please proceed.
Well, first of all, thank you for the information and the litany of all the groups that are helping, and, you know, it's amazing to think about what they do and what they accomplish, and what, if they weren't around, what it would be like. That would be really tragic. You know, you probably, like me, when I walk door-to-door in campaigning, I hear a lot of questions about, you know, homelessness. What are you going to do to help homelessness? What are you going to do to solve that problem? And, of course, it's not an easy conversation, as far as there's no, you know, pat solutions, so to speak. But I think we probably all would agree that living on the street, like you talked about, is not safe for people. I mean, you talked about robbery, you talked about assaults, you know, the weather, lots of different things. So I guess my question is, what could we do different as a city, given our financial constraints, that we aren't doing now to help the process? Because, you know, I've been out with our police folks and gone on visits to homeless camps and things of that nature, and, you know, I mean, it seems like, what I saw at least, was we went, we visited, they weren't ready, the people, you know, they had, everybody we saw seemed to me like had some sort of either mental or substance abuse kind of issue. That's the information that I got. And, and so, you know, the question that seems, you know, that rolls around in my head is, okay, if they're not ready for help, they don't want help, and we just, you know, walk away and say, we'll come back in two weeks and check on you again, that doesn't seem to help the problem. Doesn't seem to help them, it's kind of, you know, enabling them in a way. And so I guess my question is, is what could we do differently to help address that? And maybe there is nothing, but, you know, I just, I guess that's what, that's the question that I have.
As a complex answer, I will say, I'm going to stress my point, that offering services early is a big part of it. There is such a spectrum of the people in that situation. I mean, I met gentlemen who have camped up by Pitcher Park. You would never know. And I'm visiting with them, they both had full-time jobs, but they could not afford utilities and rent. utilities and rent. They lived in their tent, they didn't beg, they didn't do anything else, they both were cooks. They're like, we get up, we go to work every day, they're not bothering anybody. You have all the way to the person who has such severe mental health disorders, living at 35th and Nolan, just laying down in the middle of the sidewalk. That, you know, it's such a difference in what that person needs. It is not unusual that folks who have significant mental health issues are going to need more than 10 contacts before they trust anybody enough to come in for any kind of services. Right now, committing people against their will, there's a lot of court cases that are negotiating fast space. Can you declare that this person is currently unsafe because they won't come inside when it's 12 below zero? You can argue that that's a threat to life and limb right there, and that person is no longer safe. We did such a disservice to the community when we abandoned all of our psychiatric hospitals with no plan. So right now, the biggest provider of mental health services is currently our prison system. So we are slowly coming back because there are people who have such severe mental illness that it has to be done inpatient. Downtown is actually building a brand-new unit to be able to take some of those severely and persistently mentally ill. I don't know where the courts are going to come on involuntary commitment, whether you can do that or not, so I'm going to tell you at this point, that is a question that is still to be determined. But you and I also went out and saw places where the person had disorganized thought, right? They just had a pile of junk, and they had a tent, and they had stuff stacked all around, and go around the trees, and you see the next guy who has a perfectly maintained tent with a welcome mat and a little trash can outside, that guy's coming in quick, right? He's already got the organized thought to be able to get out of the woods and into a place, if we can find a place that's affordable. So it's just, the intervention has to be tailored to the person and their needs.
Very good.
Anybody else who's on our squad who feels like they want to correct anything that I said? Okay?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman, thank you for giving that high-level, big scope of the situation and problem that we have going on. That's not slowing down any, just for fun, compare and contrast. When I was on the city council from 1996 to 2004 in the 2nd District, this issue was pretty much nonexistent. You had, you know, you had your bums, I guess, if you will, in different unsightly words, but you did not have this situation. This is a phenomenon that has really taken root over the last probably 15-plus years, give or take. Getting on the city council again in 2016, I was pretty dumbfounded about the true change. I mean, I saw it as a citizen, as a constituent, people out and about, but getting up here and understanding and taking a look under the hood of the problems and some of the resources, it was pretty daunting to put my hands and arms around things that are taking place. So the community partners that we're working with, they, we owe them a great deal of gratitude for the service that they have been providing, both our community partners, our churches, kind-hearted people, because we're all still human, made in the image of God at the end of the day. With, how do we move forward is the thing I am tired of hearing, not in my backyard. Because guess what? They're here, so let's work, let's try to do what we can do for that. One of the things that we, I think we desperately need or need more of is drop-in center to help with that street-level outreach care. When you were talking about the, you know, the access to your driver's license, birth certificate, social security, technology has jumped so great to where a lot of that can be at a drop-in center, Good Shepherd, when they get fully up and going, that there's a lot of cloud-based storage opportunities there, to where you don't have to keep your physical card on you, you can have this stuff stored. So when you're ready to make that leap from being unhoused to housed, you have those documents ready to go. So I'm excited about having some of those opportunities. Some of the stuff the city's done, about three years ago, we changed our ordinance to allow group-living facilities. Our ordinances, our ordinance previously to that was so tight that you really couldn't hit a baseball around an area that would not, that would hit a church, school, a city-owned facility. So we were able to take a lot of that restriction language, work with the community, work with some of the outreach groups to tighten up and really make it allowable to have group-living facilities, homeless shelters, soup kitchens and all of that, and still keep it respectful to the neighborhood. So I think that's one of the big leap forwards that we've done. We've had one person so far, I believe, to take advantage of that. So those are some of the strides that we're working with. Mr. Wu, we had a great tour with Mr. Wu, when was that, last spring, I think? Had a great tour, and I believe he's here now, so thank you for coming. I was super impressed with the way his facility is set up and ran, and the opportunity to possibly work with him here. So I think we've got some good stuff in the mix. But ultimately, it comes down to, because I know we're in campaign season, done it, went through it five times myself, and the last round is very much, you know, we have homeless issues, what are you going to do about it? No, the question is, what are we going to do about it? Not what are you going to do about it? Because I can give you the list of what the city's doing, as much as we possibly can, given our finances, as much as I wish we had a money tree behind us, we don't. These are the things that the whole community needs to take a look at. So that's my stance. It's not what are the city, it's what we are going to do. And that's where working with the groups that you've been working with really helps out. And it gives us resources, as council people, to really be able to take those resources and get the help that we need for our folks and/or with our constituents, give them the contact information that they can use too. Got a lot of work ahead of us, but I think education's going to be a big key as we work with our constituents on some of this stuff. And also, as projects do come forward with housing, with potential drop-in centers into the future or different facilities, that we listen to the community, obviously, but we don't let the naysayers, and not in my backyard, start dictating how we are going to be able to service all the members of our community in a way that makes sense. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else other further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, and Assistant City Manager, anything?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
And we have a boards and commissioners report, so thank you.
A recommendation has been made to reappoint Lupe Mo and Charlene Gray to the Human Relations Commission. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Charlene Gray and Patrick Casey to the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Wes Epperson, Pam Wushan, Lebet Ojeda, and Marcy Gragg to the Street Improvement Oversight Committee. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Anthony Summer to the Sustainability Commission. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Ron Brew to the Tax Increment Finance Committee. Excuse me. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Rob, Roby Matthews to the Truman Memorial Scholarship Committee, and a recommendation has been made to appoint Ron Clemmons to the Independence Harry S. Truman Award Commission. Staff requests direction to add resolutions to the next regular meeting, appointing these individuals to those boards.
Thank you. Anything else? With that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.